...our corporate board members is present. This meeting has been duly called and the notices being this meeting have been posted in accordance with Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code under 551. First time?
First time. If everyone would please stand and join us in the invitation and the pledge of allegiance to our leader.
Dear Lord, help us, Lord, here, Lord, do you give us the guidance and the wisdom to make the decisions that best meet the needs of the children of this district, the staff, the faculty of this district, dear Lord, just please help us as we go through this day that we remember that you are our leader and our guide and, dear Lord, just help us the rest of us speak in Jesus' name, amen.
(Inaudible)
Thank you, you may continue. Alright, we're going to begin this evening with our recognition. We have several, as you can see, from everybody who is here, and this is our opportunity to recognize all of our outstanding students, staff, organizations, coaches, and everyone who puts so much heart and soul into what they do. We would like to start by recognizing our FFA and newly established FFA chapter. If Mr. Sincooley and Ms. Jenna Haig would come forward.
Hello, everyone. My name is Corey Sincooley. I, along with my teaching partner, Ms. Jenna Martinez, are very proud of the work that we've been able to do with this newly started ag program that we haven't had since, I believe, 2002, 2003. And so, many of the students that we're recognizing here today have been putting in a lot of work to charter our FFA program, which they have to do fifteen different activities throughout the year and develop a presentation in order to satisfy the requirements of the state to get our charter. So, we're gonna be recognizing them, and along with the spring season, we had a lot of different competitions that they partook in and were very successful with, competing against schools of all size, all the way up to 6A. So, we're gonna recognize those students here today.
So, these springtime competitions are kind of geared towards different careers in the agriculture industry, so there's multiple different contests that the kids are able to participate in. We have our floriculture team, they placed eighth in the district. We have our nursery landscape team, who is here tonight, they placed second in the district. That is Jackson Gibson, Matty Whitley, and John Coker. We have our milk quality team, they're here as well, they placed second in district, Roy Hitt, Braden Driscoll, and Atticus Thomas. Our meats team is back, they're hiding in the back. They competed at a practice competition. That's Noel Alvarado, Brian Hooper, Clyde Bruington, and then Alfredo Aguado. We had a few different public speakers compete in the spring as well, so we had Matty Whitley prepare in prepared public speaking. She placed fourth at the district level. Malachi Sterling competed in extemporaneous public speaking, he placed second at the district level, and then advanced to area and placed fifth place. And then we had Alicia Sharp, who participated in the FFA talent show at the district level as well. So, all of these kids really did a great job at signing up and participating in these contests for the first time, so we're really proud of all of them.
I would personally like to thank Mr. Sincooley and Ms. Martinez. I think that's a new life name. Okay, that caught me by surprise. They put a lot of work into getting this program started and off the ground, and it's been very impressive what they've accomplished in just one year, so thank you for all your hard work. The next group that we want to recognize is our UIL academics. Ms. Harley Hamlet is going to present all of our students. We have several state qualifiers and several who participated every year.
I'm Ms. Hammett, I'm the UIL coordinator at the high school. I have lots of things to brag about on these kids and then some that aren't here. This year, we had four teams compete at the CX district meet in February. Four, all four of our teams placed. We are first, second, fourth, and fifth. The first and second teams qualified for state. This is the first time since 2017 that we've qualified for CX to make state. So, at the district meet in March, we had thirteen students qualify for the regional meet in nineteen events, so some students qualified in multiple events. That included seven district champions. Sarah Huntsucker also tied for overall top student, which is an award given out to the student who individually scores the most points, so she competed in six events, and across the six events, she tied for the most points with a senior from Gatesville who is going to Harvard. So, that's amazing. At the district meet, we also earned first-place speech team awards and first-place journalism team. We also have many members of the journalism team who will likely be named to the all-state journalism staff. Last year, we had one student, who was Sarah. This year, we will likely have six to be named. Out of those thirteen kids that went to the regional meet, six of them placed at the regional meet. Sarah Huntsucker got fifth in news writing. Alejandro got fourth in prose, which is alternate to state. Israel Pennetti not here, got third in poetry, qualifying for state. Trent Nemec got third in informative speaking, qualifying for state. Dawson Casio got second in headline writing, qualifying for state. And Glenn McDaniel got first in news writing, qualifying for state. So, we have four students going to the state meet next week. We were also the third-place journalism team in the region, and this is the first time since 2019 that we have qualified for academic speech state. And they'll compete next Monday and Tuesday at the state tournament. And then, the last thing is Israel, who's not here, and Glenn also will apply for a TILF scholarship, who is, the scholarship is only available for students who compete at the UIL state tournament.
Thank you, Ms. Hammett. Okay, the next group that we are going to recognize are our track teams. First of all, we're gonna recognize our girls' track with our area and regional qualifiers. I believe Coach Mize is going to come present now.
Alright, I'm not Coach Falcone, but I'm gonna try and step in tonight. So, we had ten qualifiers for the area and regional track meet this year. We had Larry Cross, she was an area qualifier in the four-by-four hundred meter relay and the four hundred meter dash. Chastie Fluker was the area qualifier for the two hundred meter dash. Soraya Cooper, it was a qualified area qualifier for the four-by-four hundred meter relay. Nevada Lawson, pretty and yellow here, she, area qualifier in the four-by-four hundred meter relay. Carly Whitaker, she was an alternate for the four-by-four hundred relay. Kiana Moore, she was an area qualifier relay alternate. Valora, we're just gonna call you Val. Val Rodarte, she was an area qualifier and a regional qualifier. She got second in the area meet in the shot foot, so she advanced to the area and regional meets both in the discus. Samara Casey, she was an area and regional qualifier in the shot foot, and she got third place in the district. Hayley Roman was an area and regional qualifier in the one hundred meter hurdles, and she took fourth place there. And then Leah Morgan was an area qualifier in the four-by-four hundred meter relay. So, they did Conley proud, they did a great job this season, and I'm very proud that they are a part of the first group that I've had being here.
Thank you, Coach Mize. Okay, now for our boys' track recognition, Coach Campbell.
Alright, I'm Coach Campbell, head boys' track coach this year. I don't have anything written down, so if I forget something, you guys just remind me. Start out, team-wise, these guys ended up third in the district, runner-up at area, and third place at regional. The four-by-four that consisted of Adrian Rintoria, raise your hand. Kamari Linville, and two that are not here, CJ and Benson, they got, they were district champs in the sixteen hundred meter relay, area champs in sixteen hundred meter relay, and regional champ in the sixteen hundred meter relay. They qualified for state, they finished seventh, fifth place. Sorry, sorry about that. Fifth place, did a PR with their time. We was hoping to, I know he's gonna smile over there, I was, I'm not gonna say it. Starting over with Daniel Hancock, finished third at district, finished first at area, third at regional, and qualified for state where he finished sixth place. PR in the fifty-three, three, at the state meet, great job. Brayden Ford, he was an area qualifier in the four hundred relay and the eight hundred relay. Xavier Williams was, he finished first at district in the triple jump, finished first in triple jumping area, and he finished sixth place at regional. We're excited about him, I have to put him in more than one event next year. Okay? Next is Linville. Linville qualified in area in the eight hundred relay, also the sixteen hundred meter relay. He qualified for regionals in the eight hundred relay and the sixteen hundred relay, and he qualified for state in the sixteen hundred meter relay. Rashawn Richardson qualified for area in the eight hundred relay and also the four hundred relay. Jambone, he was an area qualifier in the long jump, where he won, took first place in district, one hundred, two hundred. He was a regional qualifier in the eight hundred relay, and he was also the alternate for the sixteen hundred meter relay at state. Then we have our two babies, these two guys were freshmen, we moved them up to help us out with, at the district track meet. Travis Walker finished sixth place in the triple jump, and he ran in the area meet in the four hundred relay. And then we have Raheem Fluker, he ran at area fourth in the four hundred relay as well. Have a couple of guys that are not here, but I do want to say their name. CJ Evans, he qualified in area in the four hundred, eight hundred, no, four hundred, and then the sixteen hundred meter relay, also regional in the four hundred and sixteen hundred meter relay, and also state in the sixteen hundred meter relay. Same for Jermichael Benson, he qualified in the same team. Okay, I saved these two guys for last because they're the only seniors that we have, and we're excited about these two guys. Amarian Barnes finished first at district in the three hundred, finished first at area in the three hundred, and he did the cardinal sin, you know, you don't play basketball during track season. So, he twisted his ankle for regional meet, so he didn't do as well, but hey, I appreciate you, alright? And then our team captain, Adrian. I apologize for messing your name up a time or two, okay, but he got it right, alright? Adrian, Adrian, he was a great leader for us this year. He qualified in area in the four hundred, four hundred relay and the sixteen hundred meter relay. He also qualified for regional in the four hundred and the sixteen hundred meter relay. He won the four hundred at, at the area meet, and he got second at regional. He finished seventh, seventh at the state track meet, and he also ran on the sixteen hundred meter relay, and we will definitely miss him too.
Alright, thank you, Coach Campbell. Next, we are going to go a little bit back in time, and we are going to recognize our basketball teams. If I can have Coach Mize come up for the girls' basketball recognition.
Alright, all basketball players here, here, that are winning, are, after the season, y'all come forward, please. Alright, so, we had one senior, Xenia Minnet, I always call her the wrong thing because I coached against her for so many years, and I never, I called her the wrong thing for six years. So, Xenia Minnet, she was first-team all-district, she was academic all-district, she was Texas High School Coaches Association All Academic, she was Texas Association of Basketball Coaches All Academic, and she was first-team Super SynTech team. So, our one senior, she did a really good job this, this year. Our one junior, Chastie Fluker, she was honorable mention all-district, she was academic all-district, and she was honorable mention in Super SynTech. Kiana Moore was, she's a sophomore, she is, she was second-team all-district, academic all-district, and honorable mention in Super SynTech. We had Addie, Addison Douglas, she was honorable mention all-district, academic all-district. We had Samara Cooper, Casey, Samara, I'm sorry, Samara Casey, and she was academic all-district. We had Delia Haynes, academic all-district. We had Val Rodarte, academic all-district. And Kylie Campbell was academic all-district. So, almost all of the team, I'm very proud to say that they all received that academic all-district, because when the ball quits bouncing, that's their future. And so, I'm very proud of this group, and I know they're gonna go out and do great things. So, these were the recipients for this year in girls' basketball.
Alright, next, if I can have Coach Snell come forward to do the recognition for the boys' basketball team.
Alright, before we recognize these guys, there's a couple of people that I would like to recognize myself, to Coach Brooks, our assistant coach, hey, three claps on three, one, two, three. Assistant Coach, Coach Brooks, Coach Smith is not here. The next group of people I'd like to recognize is our parents. Thank you guys for putting up with Coach Snell. I know I send y'all lots of text messages and stuff like that, but I really appreciate you guys for giving me the opportunity to coach your son. And then, there's a whole lot of other people I can recognize, but they're not here, so I'm not gonna say anything. To the director of basketball operations, which is my wife, Ms. Snell, I'd like to thank you, sweetheart, for all that you do for our program and for these young men. So, we're gonna do something a little different. I'm gonna introduce, he's known as the bull in a china cabinet. He's a bull in a china cabinet, do y'all get that? Alright, so, if that didn't come from me, that came from his mama. This man, Daniel Hancock, can y'all, can y'all see it now? Bull in a china cabinet. Daniel Hancock, he's a junior, he's a returner, first-team all-district, yay, and first-team all-academic. So, Daniel, thank you, sir, introduce your team, brother. He's gonna introduce the team. Alright, you ready?
Alright, first off, we got a guard number three, Katie Livin', Katie's a real tough guy, I love the defense, I love his energy. He'll get some buckets too, he's first-team all-district. Adrian Hernandez, moved up late, but grabbed the game, it was very close in practice. His energy is very much appreciated. Number one, Kenny Coffman, a junior, he had some big minutes for us, especially in the first playoff game. Had some big minutes, he gets to that game. I love this hair. We got number ten, sophomore, Taylor Randolph, he's a big shot taker, but he's a big shot maker, he got confidence, we love it. Rashad Stubbs, he's a senior, number twelve, we gonna miss him a lot. When he came in the game, it was instant boost of energy, and this dude, I had to practice against him, he's tough, man. He got me a better. Number fifteen, Eli Walker.
He's a senior for us, he's gonna be much appreciated. Thank you, Eli.
Number two, Jerry Williams. We trying to get him, Penny Coffman, the IELTS, for their hair. We got number two, Jerry Williams, a great player, he dealt with some injuries, but he's always here. Tough guy, great competitor. He was honorable mention all-district, he's just a sophomore. Chris Nobles, love you, Chris. He was honorable mention all-district, he can get buckets, he's another tough guy. I mean, that dude, I mean, I kinda love him, but that's tough, man, I'm telling you. Number zero, point guard, Tom Brown, he's a sophomore, that's PG one, we love Tommy. Number five, Jamari Vincent, he's a junior. District twenty-three, four A, co-defensive player of the year. Waco Tribune Hill, Super SynTech, second team in TABC all-region. He's an athlete, y'all know that. Kamari Miller, that's Miller Tom, if y'all didn't know. He's another senior, big-time shooter. Gonna miss you, Miller Tom. And number twenty-one, Edrice Lee, he's just a freshman, y'all, and he got, he got honorable mention all-district as well, so he's gonna be good coming up for us.
I'd like to say one more thing, this was my, this is my twenty-fifth year here at Conley as the head boys' basketball coach going into my thirtieth year all here at Conley. My high school basketball coach came this year, and he and some of my teammates came and recognized me for that. I wasn't expecting that at all, but that's, this is, this is really, if you don't know, this is really a special place to me. I would tell people if they would cut me, my blood would be blue and gray. So, I'm gonna try to finish this thing out here if they'll keep me, but I'm looking forward to the next-year guys, to our seniors, y'all know what the deal is. Look me up, if you need something, let me know. This is, this is also, we finished at the, we finished the district champions, by district champions, area champions, and we finished for the tenth time in our, in my career at the regional semifinals. We trying to get past that, it's really hard, but we're really trying to get past that. And then, we've gone to the playoffs fifteen consecutive years. So, we're trying to keep that thing going until God says, time for you to go, bro. Got it? Alright, so, we're ready. Thank y'all very much, I appreciate it.
Okay, next, we would like to recognize our avid students of the month. We have junior, yeah, junior, they're may avid students of the month, Ms. Connor. Ms. Connor, do you want to come present your avid student of the month? Oh, Ms. McDonald, okay, alright, come on, Miss.
Alright, so, good evening, everybody. I am happy to present our last, but certainly not least, May avid student of the month. And I'm very, very excited and esteemed to do this honor. Our avid student of the month is going to be Nathaniel Granado. Please step forward, sir. Okay, alright, don't break out the tissues just yet, Miss Ag, you are. I have something written to just kind of keep everything nice and clean so we can go ahead, and I won't take up too much of your time. This student may be known as Nathaniel Granado in Skyward, but we lovingly know him as simply as Rocky. He's an exceptional student, very mature beyond his years. His insights and way of thinking are highly impressive. He always submits high-quality work at ninety-nine percent accuracy ahead of deadline. Rocky is not only an ideal avid student, but a model student for all of his sixth-grade peers. If I could clone him, I would, confidently knowing that his presence and demeanor raises the value of our campus. While many have come and gone as liabilities to the avid program, Rocky has proven to be a precious asset, encouraging uncertain teachers to think. So, that's what an avid student looks like. In closing, our final avid student of the month is not a mistake or an accident. What you see before you, ladies and gentlemen, is advancement via individual determination in the flesh. in the flesh. To his parents, thank you for your son. Society is much better with Rocky in it. Congratulations, sir.
Okay, to, for our high school Abid Student of the Month, Ms. Bird, they're, okay. So May is also full of many other recognitions, we've already recognized our principals earlier this month, we had Teacher Appreciation Week, uh, we also had Nurses Day on May the 8th. But this is also National Speech, Language, and Hearing Month, and Ms. Tressel would like to come up and recognize some of her people, uh, who actually worked in this room.
I'd like to recognize our speech department, here, looking out right here. Uh, these three ladies, we are so proud of everything that they do on a daily basis. As you can imagine, speech, language, communication, it affects all areas of school life, and it is important what they do. We work with, uh, they work with kids with disabilities, um, every single day, and, um, speech and language pathology is a shortage area in the state of Texas, and so, we are incredibly fortunate to have these, uh, three ladies. Savannah Blair, she is new to Conley this year, but Blanche Boudreaux, Blanche, how long have you been with the district?
14 years.
14 years, and Lindsay, uh, 10. 10 total. So, um, they choose to work at Conley, they're highly recruited, other people try to steal them all the time, and, um, anyway, so we are happy that they choose to work here at Conley ISD. So Savannah, and Blair, Lindsay, and Blanche Boudreaux.
That concludes our recognition for this month. Uh, next item on the agenda, did I miss anybody? Maybe I should ask that first, okay. Uh, next item on the, uh, agenda is open forum, Ms. Els, do we have anybody?
Yes, we have the ability, uh, to comment on next gen, uh, student.
Just a second here, any person wishing to address the board during the period, uh, reserved for public comment at the board meeting must sign up, which you have done in accordance with district, uh, policy, PED local. Each participant will be limited to three minutes to make comments to the board. Uh, the board is, is not permitted to discuss or act upon any issues that are not posted on the agenda for tonight's meeting. The board has adopted compliant policies that are designed to secure the lowest possible administrative level and prompt a equitable resolution of complaints and concerns. Each of these processes provide that if a resolution cannot be achieved administratively, the person may appeal to the administrative decision to the board as a properly posted agenda item. Finally, please be aware that the rules of the decorum will be enforced during the public comment period. Uh, personnel attacks, name-calling, and rude or slanderous remarks will not be tolerated. Each participant is legally responsible for the content and consequences of his or her own statement. Thank you.
I have a timer set.
Go.
Well, I'm sure all of y'all received my email last week that each of y'all decided to ignore and not ask, um, so hopefully y'all are paying attention this time, because I'm not gonna continue to sit here and be quiet while y'all allow other students to physically harm my daughter. So these are two of the students that y'all keep allowing to be injured at your school, at the primary campus. Um, I put this, failure of leadership, safety, and accountability within your district, dismissed my email back in October 2024. Campus police, school resource officer Brad, superintendent, administrators, I'll ignore calls, emails, and verbal requests for actions. Um, every level of this district has failed my children, and now because Officer Brad this has actually escalated to a CPS referral and to the actual police of Lacey Lakeview, because your school district hasn't been able to do anything. It's actually pretty probable that-
Now, you need to stop, you cannot use personnel names.
Titles.
You can either escalate the door, but please, you do not refer to anyone as an individual, their position only.
Okay, well, not sure your position, um, but you are able to comment on Facebook, um, however, you can't comment to any emails or anything, so I guess it's only convenient when it's campaigning for your position. Um, there's multiple documented instances of physical aggression by another student towards my daughter, and your district has done nothing to prevent these assaults, instead you allow her to continue suffering in what's supposed to be a safe learning environment, yet your ISD philosophy is to punish the victim. My daughter's been hit, slapped, had her hair pulled, she's been stabbed with a pencil, chased in the gym, she's witnessed the same student throw a chair at her teacher, and yet she has also had a book thrown at her eye. You allow this to continue and force my child to return to an unsafe school every single day, because if I don't send her, the same officers who dismiss these assaults would be concerned about truancy. My children have been denied access, there's been a certain aide who, I can't name, um, but actually admitted to yelling in my daughter's face because she needed to go to the restroom. I see on your agenda, you're also discussing this Every Student Succeeds Act, and I would like to know where exactly those funds are going if you get this grant, because they're not helping every student, they are helping certain students. Um, I would like to know why y'all continue to allow physical assaults on your campus, and why nobody is holding your primary campus principal accountable for ignoring her resolutions on the Level 1 grievance. Just because a student can't be prosecuted criminally doesn't mean your district isn't liable. Um, and basically what it boils down to, when the aggressor is a white male, and when the victim is of Hispanic and Middle Eastern descent, um, your inactions actually start to look like discrimination. So I follow your chain of command, but you're hiding behind policy, and a child is being seriously hurt in your leadership. Y'all continue to fail, um, but I'm just letting y'all know right now, basically, um, the next time this is brought and my child is injured at school, all of your names will be entered into the deuce.
Thank you. Next item.
Uh, next item is to execute the statements of officer for newly-elected trustee. So, Ms. Johnson, if you would like to start with your, uh, by reading your executive statement as a, yes, you need to stand, as a newly-elected trustee.
I, Heather McCarty, Johnson, do solemnly swear or affirm that I have not directly or indirectly, uh, offered, promised to pay, contributed, or promised to contribute any money or thing of value, or promised any public office or employment for the giving or withholding of a vote at the election at which I was elected, or as a reward to secure my appointment or confirmation, whichever the case may be, so help me God.
Thank you. Mr. Lowry, if you would, uh, read your, execute your statements.
I, Keith Lowry, do solemnly swear or affirm that I have not directly or indirectly paid, offered, promised to pay, contributed, or promised to contribute any money or thing of value, or promised any public office or employment for the giving, or withholding of a vote at the election at which I was elected, or as a reward to secure my appointment or confirmation, whichever this case may be, the case may be, so.
Thank you. All right, our next item is, uh, for our newly-elected trustees to take their oath of office.
I, Heather McCarty, Johnson, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully execute the duties of the Office of Place One, Board of Trustees of the State of Texas, and will do my best, to the best of my ability, preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States of this state, so help me God.
Mr. Lowry.
I, Keith Lowry, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully execute the duties of Office of Place Two, Board of Trustees of the, of the State of Texas, and will do the best of my abilities, preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States, and this state, so help me God.
Congratulations, welcome.
Congratulations. All right, our next item is reorganization of the Board of Trustees.
Need a motion for President? Make a motion for Stephen Carter?
Second.
Any other? Hearing none, I guess that is settled. Vice President?
Make a motion for Keith Lowry, second.
Any other? Hearing none, welcome to your position. For Secretary?
Make a motion, Heather Johnson. Johnson, that's right.
Any other? Hearing none, welcome to your position.
So, Keith made the motion, who, who seconded? Oh, Daniel did, okay, all right, so, yes, for Secretary. All right, so, I think if they are the only ones, then that will be the final, so Stephen Carter will, uh, sit in place as President, Keith Lowry, Vice President, and Secretary, Heather Johnson.
Next item.
Uh, next item is consider approval of the consent agenda. I think I just got some. So our consent agenda, uh, consists of our minutes from our April, regular April meeting, our financials for the month of April, and then, there is also one other addition that is in the consent agenda this month, and it is a report-only, as far as right now, it's a police, uh, the policy manual for the Conley ISD Police Department. We're doing this just like what we do at TAFP update, give you a month to actually review the contents of it, um, and then we will bring it back in the next month for approval. That will give you time to review it, and then if you have any questions, then we'll be able to propose them to Chief Sanders next month.
Need further discussion? I make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting on April 21st, 2025, the monthly financial report for April 2025, and I guess the, uh, report of manual policy for Conley ISD Police Department.
Stephen Carter motion, Danny Rain second, to approve the minutes of the regular meeting on April 21st, 2025, and the monthly financial report of April 2025, and the report for the policy manual of the Conley ISD Police Department.
Let's just take a moment, further discussion? Hearing none, all voting for the appropriate sign? Any opposed, same sign? You go, you play. Five for one decision. Next item.
Uh, next item is consider impossible action to approve the CTPA inter-local purchasing resolution.
So CTPA stands for Central Texas Purchasing Alliance, it's a group of over 210 school districts across the state of Texas. Um, you've got districts like Austin ISD for SCO, uh, Waco ISD is a member, and, uh, actually the, the gentleman that is kind of overseeing operations currently here is kind of the managing person, is from Round Rock ISD, so, uh, districts of all sizes, this is just like any other purchasing co-op that we would be a member of, the difference here is that it's member school districts, uh, and ultimately, we could take advantage of, uh, contracts that they have procured, you know, the, the benefit of a purchasing co-op is that, um, the, the RFP has already been put out there, uh, all of the required, uh, things in RFP have already been met, and so it's an approved contract. By joining this group, uh, adopting the resolution that's really short boilerplate that just says we'll be a, a member of it, uh, we would be able to take advantage of, uh, contracts that the other 210 districts have already procured specifically, uh, when we, uh, agreed to work with Armco last board meeting. I misunderstood and thought that they were a TIPS, uh, purchasing co-op member, and they are not, uh, but they do have a contract with a member district of, uh, CTPA. The annual fee to join is $150, so, uh, yeah, I mean, all the way around, it just makes sense to, to join, so. Uh, recommendation is please approve the, uh, resolution, uh, to join Central Texas Purchasing Alliance co-op.
I make a motion to approve the CTPA inter-local purchasing, uh, resolution.
Stephen Carter motion, Heather Johnson second, to approve the CTPA inter-local purchasing agreement.
Motion to stay on, for any further discussion? Hearing none, all voting for the appropriate sign? Any opposed, same sign? All voting for, motion carries, next item.
Next item is consider impossible action regarding a resolution authorizing participation in the MoK Casey inter-local purchasing agreement.
So I'll give you the whole preamble again, other than to say, MoK Casey is, uh, a, uh, advisory firm here in Texas, uh, their two operating members are Dr. Buck Kilkris, who is, uh, superintendent up in Hillsborough, and then made his way to I often, uh, very, very well-respected in public education, and, uh, former Senator Van Taylor, uh, is kind of the other, uh, the other head of, of that organization. Uh, they do a ton of advisory, public school finance advice, uh, and they, my understanding is this is fairly new, but I may be wrong, uh, that they started a purchasing co-op. We currently are not pursuing any of the goods or services that they have through their co-op, but some of them are, uh, certainly enticing and might be things that we bring to you in, in subsequent meetings, so, wanted to go ahead and get a head start and get into the co-op, and then we can start looking at what some of our options are, so. Uh, recommendation is to approve the resolution authorizing participation in the MoK Casey interlo, inter-local purchasing co-op.
Need any motion?
Second. Keith Lowry motion, Heather Johnson second, to approve the resolution authorizing participation in the MoK Casey inter-local purchasing agreement.
Motion second on it.
And it's free.
Even better. Motion to stay on, for any further discussion? Hearing none, all voting for the appropriate sign? Any opposed, same sign? All voting for, motion carries, next item.
Next ca, item is public notification of the ESA grants application for 25, 26, this is a report-only, uh, Ms. Chua.
So, we are required to have public notice that we will be doing the ESA grant application, has not opened yet, but will in July, early June. We don't have dollar amounts, we only have planning amounts that you see there, and those are amounts based on what we got, uh, what we received last year, so I'm not positive those amounts are gonna be the same, typically they've gone down, and then when they reallocated, they've gone back up again, but these are the planning amounts that I will plan for in each one of those areas. So this is just public notification that we will be applying for that to grant.
Awesome, thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome. All right, our next item is consider impossible action to approve the memorandum of understanding with Mentoring Alliance. I'm just gonna pass this around, I have one copy, and she couldn't get another copy to me. I mentioned this, uh, just a bit in our previous board meeting, Mentoring Alliance is an organization, it was actually initially started out in East Texas, uh, around the Tyler area, but what they started out as was very much a faith-based organization that did after-school care, and parents could opt out of any of the religious association, Bible studies, so forth. They have since changed their methodology, uh, because really what they want to do is just reach, uh, more of our underserved population, and just provide really good, solid mentors. So I've been talking to them, it actually started years ago, they had a different director at that point in time, now we have, uh, Amy Reynolds is in our area, and she is like on fire about, uh, getting this going in, in our school district. So, they would like to start doing an after-school program, and it would actually be for our early childhood, our primary, and our elementary students, and it would be after-school until 5:30. Parents now have to opt in to the Bible study portion, otherwise they do not receive it, but they are guaranteed that they will get academic assistance with their homework, they have a designated time for that, they also have a lot of enrichment activities that go along with it. Uh, the best thing about it is they have agreed to do it for a flat rate fee for our families at $15 a week. Currently, after-school care, uh, costs about $93 a week, so it's a tremendous savings. Also, if students qualify, or if their families qualify, uh, for childcare assistance through the Texas workforce, so they can accept that as well. They are also working on a plan on the days that we have Intervention Friday, that they can actually, during the school year, we have to have transportation to, uh, to the care. So they have said that in the mornings, even if, uh, students don't need to be at Intervention Day, that they'll just do enrichment activities with the kids at the, those grade levels. The one hitch about the Fridays is then they would have to send them home, because they can't, uh, they don't have enough staff to man from 7:30 in the morning until 5:30 in the evening. So that is the plan going into the fall, is to start an after-school program, and then the next year, go into doing a summer program, and that's to where it would be for the duration of the summer. They accept kids at 7:30 a.m., and then they have them until 6:00 p.m. Robinson ISD currently, uh, uses Mentoring Alliance, and they fund it through the ACE Grant, where it's free to all students. Um, and then, the other beauty of it- And then the other beauty of it is during the summer, the district has to agree for two hours a day, an hour for math and an hour of reading, that we will have instructors there to assist or do lessons with them during the summer. So basically, they do summer school all year long, instead of how we have operated in the past, as far as we do it for two or three weeks, four hours a day. This just kind of elongates it throughout the summer, and it's offered to all students, but then they can really target the kids who really need that summer intervention. And I've spoke to Dr. Hope about it, he sings their praises, they have been very willing to answer any questions that we have, and then the fact that they were willing to kind of go out on a limb for us, just looking at our demographics and being able to offer, you know, the after-school for $15 a week is, is very phenomenal, and just shows their belief in what they want to invest as far as in our students and in our district. So we have not, what I put on here is like a model of the memorandum of understanding, we're still kind of ironing, ironing a few of the details out, but what I seek is for approval for me to execute a memorandum of understanding with them.
I make a motion to approve Mrs. Bodleberg to execute a memorandum of understanding with the Mentor Alliance, Mentoring Alliance?
Stephen Carter motion, Diane Davis second, to approve Ms. Bodleberg to execute the memorandum of understanding with Mentoring Alliance.
Motion to say no, for any further discussion? Hearing none, all voting for the appropriate sign? Any opposed, same sign? One abstention? Motion carried? Yeah, good, I appreciate that. Next item?
Next item is a report only, and this is on our bank depository request. Mr. Timmons?
So we are at the last, we're currently in the last extension of the previous bank depository request that you guys had put out long before I got here, and so I just wanted to publicly make it known that the plan is Region 12 is supposed to be here tomorrow to help me put the finishing touches on the RFP. I want to look at it, I have almost all of it completed, just a couple of questions I want to make sure are right. It comes directly from TEA, as you can imagine, they have 1,200 districts across the state of Texas, so this is the process that they have, you know, it's a pretty tight process based on what they want. It's ultimately, banks will have, my plan would be that whatever bank would be selected by an RFP, oh, the group that's going to evaluate that bid packages, that they would come to a presentation at the June board meeting. It's a pretty quick process, a standard 30-day post, but essentially, they're going to all submit proposals, their interest rate, collateral requirements, bank fees, after-hour contracts, deposit services, wire transfer, and ACH, and then if any optical imaging or merchant services, so those, almost all of those we take advantage of, and some of them we're interested in, so. Yeah, that's it, nothing to approve, just wanted y'all to know that that's what we're doing.
Next item?
Next item is a report only, the Texas Strategic Plan Review. I have attached it as far as in your agenda, most of people out there in the audience have already had the opportunity to preview, preview it. We actually get the final draft later this week, and as long as we put our stamp of approval on it, then we will begin communicating it out as far as to the community. And the, the plan in its entirety is just an accumulation of really an entire year's worth of work. The beginning of the year, the first semester, a great deal of it was put on the region service center, as far as with them collecting information from stakeholders, from parent groups, teacher groups, leaders, students, as well as doing class walkthroughs, as well as getting a sampling of assignments and sending it to TEA, as far as to take a look at the academic component, and then they kind of gave us, hey, these are, these are your areas, how do we want to address? And then this semester, it's been the steering committee who has really put the work in to identifying what are our areas that we really want to address, and then setting out a plan. Matter of fact, we even met today as far as like where our crossover is in our plans, and there is a great deal of crossover, so I think we've done a really good job of identifying, okay, this is, this is where we want to be, and just laying out the roadmap of this is how we are going to get there. So I wanted you to have your eyes on it before we get our final draft. I think it looks great, I think they did all, they did a lot of work for us, and then we've done a lot of work, but I will also say, I think it's been very eye-opening, and I think it's been very informative, and I think that we have a really good, solid roadmap set out for, for everybody to see this is kind of where we're going, and this is how we're going to get there.
Agreed. Next item?
Okay, next item is just by, our setting our date and time for our next board meeting, so if we are looking at, if we're looking at June, the actual third Monday of the month would be June the 16th?
Any conflicts? You? You're good, June 16th?
June 16th at 6:30 p.m. All right, next is our superintendent report. Enrollment has really remained pretty much unchanged, we did not run it as far as for today, we are running still right there, right around 95%, holding steady. We've had a few weeks where we've been able to recover from some of those divs, but until it all shakes out in the end, we're not going to know exactly where, where we are. We have already established our registration dates for next year, they will start on Tuesday, July 29th, and then they'll run Wednesday, both those days will be from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and then on Thursday, July 31st, we're going to go from 8:00 to 1:00, and then again from 2:30 to 7:00 p.m. We've already spoke to all of our Kingspeople, registrars, everybody is already aware, and then we will actually have paraprofessionals back on duty that week, so the principals will be able to help us staff some of those evening registration times. We've been working with Tri-Cities here recently, they are going to do their school supply drive for us again, and they're going to pack back backpacks by grade level. We actually disseminated information to all of the campuses to share with parents, we put it in our flyover of where parents can go to register with the QR code for a backpack of supplies. They are going to cut that off that last week in June, and then they are going to send it to the campuses and let us know, we have this many supplies available, and then work with the campuses as far as to narrow our scope. They really strive to be able to fulfill, fulfill all of the needs, but they can't guarantee it, but they want to give families enough notice to let them know if they're going to need to supplement, supplement their supplies. They are going to distribute the backpacks on Saturday, July 26th, and that is going to be during a community health fair that Tri-Cities is also organizing, and we are going to do it up here in the administration gym. We did the same thing last year, but this year they wanted to add to it and do a little more as far from the community health aspect and getting information out to our families. On that same note, I met last week with Dr. Jackson Griggs, he's, he's the executive director of Waco Family Medical. He is really trying to create a relationship with school districts that don't have a great deal of healthcare within their community, and ours was one of the ones that was identified. So he is going to work with us, you know, we discussed adding a licensed professional counselor, he was super excited about that, because he actually has a clinical social worker on staff, he has a substance abuse specialist, he has pediatric, psychiatry, he has all of that realm, so that was kind of our concern, is where we can make referrals, and he said as soon as we hire someone on, he wants to bring them over, introduce them to the staff. He said that he will also come over and talk to our nurses and provide them with the means to make referrals for families, to get in for medical care, especially if they see that it's an urgent need, instead of, you know, going to the emergency room. He says they will strive, especially if it's a school referral, that if they get the call that morning, they'll see them before the end of the day, if it's in the afternoon, that they'll see them within the morning hours. So I'm excited about that, already communicated with Pam White, we wrote down a date and time set up for him to meet with the nurses. He is also going to come out in our back-to-school PD and news and session on just mental health in youth and staying healthy physically as well as mentally, so I'm excited about that, because we were kind of wondering, and now it just was kind of like an epiphany, it all came together. So our summers are also very full with training this summer, even the service center requested two consecutive days to meet with all of the leaders, and we could not come up with two consecutive days that we were all available throughout the entire summer. So they finally had to settle, and we had to divide, so we're meeting on a Tuesday and a Thursday, because we've all got something to do on Wednesday, so we're going to be busy. In that same realm, with everybody's busyness and differing calendars, we're having a hard time kind of figuring out where our custodial can land to do like this hallway and the athletics and the maintenance, because we all have so much going on. A lot of our area districts, as well as Region 12, that's one of the things that kind of ties our calendar, many of them are closed the entire week of 4th of July, so everybody is, is off, so that is something I feel that we may need to consider in the future with so many surrounding areas, for two reasons. It gives our custodial crew an opportunity to take care of those areas that are generally, there's always someone in there. The other thing would be is, because sometimes if many people take off that week, and then the others are here, it's hard to get your full sequence of your job done if you still have to wait four or five days for somebody else to come back on, so, but that's a, a full year from now, so there will be discussions that happen between now and then. Just as we are looking at our budget, there are just a few things that we need to talk about. As of right now, we don't know what the Senate is going to decide as far as with school funding. Whenever it went through the House, we were very hopeful and thinking that we were going to get an additional 1.6. I can tell you the version that's floating through the Senate right now, we are not going to get 1.6 million, so we were thinking between the cuts we made, as well as getting those funds, that we would be able to close our gap of our deficit budget. We are not, if their version goes through, and I will say, what they are proposing now is just going to get us to the 2019 funding needs, so there's still a huge gap that is to be seen, so we're just waiting for them to kind of make a decision of what we are, what they're going to give us, and it's a waiting game. There's only three weeks left as far as in this legislative session, and they have a lot of things that still have to happen between now and then. I foresee there being special sessions, and I can't tell you if they're going to make a decision on school funding prior to us starting school, so it's very difficult to make the budget with the unknown. All we have to do is plan on what we have, so that's kind of how we're going to start operating. We've put off, you know, creating the budget, hopefully that we would get some information, but we will soon be getting to the point that we're going to have to start creating a budget and then just potentially adjust as far as on the fly. With that, we also are not going to get our Hoddle Student Handbook until July, because of course that relies on all of the decisions that the legislature makes, so that is one of those also kind of up in the air, unknown, and they could send it to us on August the 1st, and meaning that it is all going to be okay. One bit of good news that did come out is House Bill 4 did actually pass through the House today, now it will go before the Senate. That is eliminating what we now know as the STAR test, and it will go very much to a model like what our MAPS testing is, where it's the beginning of the year, middle of the year, end of the year test, just to gauge a student's growth instead of making it all dependent on that one day. Everybody, and it was unanimous, I mean, that's the part that I was very impressed with, and one of the last amendments that was requested is that it goes into effect this fall. The other thing that was posed, or that was attached to it, was the ratings that were just recently released, and if the 2024 or 2025 go out, that they would just not impose any penalties on a school as far as making them create a plan that, to do that, because they really want the schools to focus on what the new accountability system would look like. The other part of it is the student growth counts in a couple of different dimensions whenever it comes to accountability, and one of them is Domain 3, I think, that accounts for 30% of your accountability, and it also counts in your Domain 2, and they are actually seeking in that Domain 3 to minimize it to what the federal rate is, and that's only count 5%, because if you miss it in 2, you also miss it in 3, and it's kind of like you're getting double punished. So that is one of the other amendments that was made, so that was a little bit of good news. When we're talking about budgets, and this is just more of an FYI to make you aware, because we did some calculations in talking to many of our sponsors, because we had talked about providing meals for students whenever they would be missing a meal as far as, you know, or Timmons had this, because he created this, that he talked to all of our sponsors, not just of athletic events, but even with all of our academic events, UIL, dance, everything all together, because we felt it's not fair to only give it to athletes or only give it to the academic scholars or whatever, but that is a testament of what we would need to budget for, to provide meals, because pretty much any of our activities that will take place after school, they're missing a meal, even if it's going to Bellneed or going to Levede, especially when we travel up to junior high, because we've got four teams playing, and they don't run four buses back and forth. So just wanted you to know that that is what would need to be budgeted for. In the conversations, and Mr. Timmons can maybe add more to this, because he's the one that collected all the information, several of them did indicate that they use their activity funds for this, some said that they had a certain number that they knew that they had to plan for out of their activities, but do you have anything else to add to that?
Just that the number that I used was $10 a meal, because...
And it's pretty difficult to get anything under $10 a meal.
$10 a supper is pretty, but...
So, we will, we will continue our discussion, but we figured we needed to go into it with numbers and, and that knowledge before, you know, making any final determinations. Next, as you are aware, some of us probably more than others, graduation is this Friday, is at 8:00 p.m. over here at Mac People Stadium. They are actually going to practice that morning, I would ask that all of the board be here no later than 7:30 to get organized and go over there. It's going to be kind of the general same seating arrangement as what we had had previously. Because it is so late, we're not going to do a meal before graduation, because I figured some of you probably have other arrangements, and if I had to wait until seven at night, you know, I'd be really angry, so. Then also, in preparation, they are doing their senior walk on Thursday. This is all of our seniors' final opportunity to be able to walk all of the campuses, they'll actually start at the high school, then they're going to the elementary, early childhood, primary, and junior high, then they are going to return to the high school, where they are going to take their group graduation picture, and then after that, our police department is kind enough to do their hamburger picnic again that day. Also, our education foundation, they are coming over to kind of gather alumni information from them. Clifford Anderson told me that he was going to be there, and he said, I'm going to tell them, they don't think it's important now, but when they get my age, and they're going to want to know where all of their federal classmates are. And they were also kind enough that they have created t-shirts, like a proud Conley alum shirt, that they are giving to all of our seniors on that day, so. Senior walk is going to start at 9:00, and it starts at the high school, elementary, early childhood, primary, and junior high, and then back to the high school, and then the lunch is at 11:30. Did I miss anything, Mr. Prer, about...
I mean, there's like 20 other things going on, but those are the main. As long as we're on Friday on time.
We will be wearing slacks, button-up shirts, we will not be wearing robes, so.
I've got plenty of blue dresses if you want. So, all right, that is all I have on my superintendent's report.
This will now turn into executive session pursuant to the following instructions. Please open meetings at 551.074, 551.0102, sorry. Yes.